June 10, 2019, welcome to committee of the whole meeting for June. We have full schedule this morning, so we're welcoming you all to State For it or Come and Go as you need to get started with agenda item number one additions to agenda. We have no additions agenda item two.
The only one I'd like to do is I'd like to present, I had a meeting with one of the citizens and regarding a working group, I'd like to just present that to council not just so that we have record on receiving it.
Sure.
There's no action needed right now, but if Patrick or Fassil have a copy of it, then I think you met with that person too.
I did, yeah.
And just so that we have, you know, bring it up with our strategic planning or whatever. So if we could just include that in, I don't know, correspondence or somewhere in the agenda.
Sure, we will acknowledge receipt of.
And that came from Gordon Hosh, but I don't think his name's on there.
No, and this will be on the agenda for Wednesday with MCDC.
Oh, okay, okay, that's good. I just want to make sure that we kept it somewhere.
Sure, okay, I will pass this along for information. Business arising over the minutes, there are none presentations are in order to agenda item number four, which is corporate, so we hand over moving to our corporate chapters.
Okay, thank you for the record nine zero one and the financial report at four point one, council has received a copy of that and you've had a chance to look at it. Does anybody have any questions regarding any of the information recognizing that all of the 2019 budget numbers have not been fully entered yet? Anybody have any questions?
When do you expect to finish up 2019 and getting everything into it?
Like the budget into the system?
Yeah.
I work from home the one day and I got like two thirds done, so I'm hoping if I can get some free time, I can get the rest in there.
So you're not getting concentrated on the.
Yeah.
Okay. Our next meeting, next council committee of all, yeah.
Okay.
I guess just so you know that we just don't want any more snow this year.
Yeah, that's a question I had too, because we budget substantially higher and we already had one over hundred percent.
Yeah.
And still have this winter season coming up to go.
Yeah, I know, we just, and that is, that's the most difficult one, like bills came into last month on the snow clearing, so it was very hard to give a true accounting of what our costs actually were, but I think for, just for the record, our budget is 272,000 and we spent 294,000, so 22,000 over budget and we haven't hit the fall, the snowfalls yet, so, and how can you pre-guess what you're going to need other than on previous years and other years, the snowfall's always various. But anyway, I guess there'll be, we'll have to steal money or take money from other parts of the budget in order to cover that off in fall, so.
So I guess our increased insurance cost, that was basically, we did receive a note that they were going to go up substantially.
We did, yeah. So they actually would have been hired, but they, because it's the group, the group insurance, they withdrew from that pool, so that we actually got a discount, so this is including a discount, so it could have been even.
I think I did see the original bill, this original amount was going to be substantial.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so this is with a discount, so that wouldn't be guaranteed for next year, I'm assuming.
Right.
One question I have is our damage claims and liability insurance, we budgeted 190, we're at 196 already.
Yeah, go ahead, Patrick, if you want to answer, which page are you on there Doug?
General operating fund, page four.
Those would be the insurance costs for all our buildings, that's what we just.
Well, that's the line item we were just talking about, yeah, I know.
Yeah, and the other thing that you don't get with our budget is we show you the annual 2019 budget, it's not a monthly budget, so depending on, like normally I guess you could, you could run that as an amortization and run it over 12 months and then the last month you would see that overage rather than right at the beginning of the year, so.
Are the, are the 2019 numbers not entered, are they fairly evenly distributed for categories? Like if we were to take, say, fair value tourism and add a third item, would that be?
It would depend on the account, kind of like Hank was saying, so like the insurance, we paid it, that's a one-time thing during the year, so that account will essentially be done for the rest of the year.
Okay.
There's some that are ongoing, but yeah, there's some line items that are like a one-time expense during the year at some point.
Sure.
So that doesn't work for all of them. If it's like ongoing costs, like hydro and stuff like that, that is, that you could do for that.
Okay, so graveyard and services, cemeteries.
Yeah.
It's 1146 and every now, would that just be a product of nothing having been entered yet, or is that our actual, on page two I believe it is?
Just a quick question, Patrick, as well, professional fees, we budget 55, do you think that was all for?
I have to look back.
Okay, that's fine, you can let me know.
Would be, I think it would include.
No.
Or I don't know if it's included in there as well.
That would be something checked by.
And I added, we added some legal.
Okay, so it's all that.
Yeah, yeah.
That would make sense.
So cemeteries on page two.
On page two.
Under 1194 is this year, this would be a product of things not having been entered yet, correct?
Yes, there's nothing entered yet and the, right, in the middle column, the budgeted number, I just, we kind of left that budget number there, normally in the past it would have been a separate mowing contract, that's covered under our current mowing contract, but I kept it there just because of the new cemetery and stuff.
Sure, okay.
Just so that we had a little bit of, should something happen, we needed to do.
Just out of interest, Patrick, you wouldn't be able to in this software have line numbers on here at all, would you? So that if any of the councillors were asking for a question, you'd say page four line 50 or 75 or something like that. Your software doesn't give you that ability?
No, no.
No, okay.
I don't think so.
Okay.
These reports kind of have to be created, so it's not like a system-generated report, I had to make this, and like a template, so I don't know what all of the options are, but.
Okay, if you ever.
For myself, I go, I do a further breakdown in this, I'll go like each account under this, each line has separate account numbers, so for myself I do that, but that's a lot of details.
Well, I'm just thinking if there's a conversation going on at that end of the table, we're sitting at this end, we don't, you know, we can't zero in on it, so.
Yeah.
Okay, no problem, go ahead.
Just one more question, I signed checks for Hank when he was away and on the last check run, there was one check that you'd put a sticky on to say hold for council approval and I didn't write it down.
Is that, is that?
Was it, it wasn't worded that, it was halfway down the pile, so I'm just, because they're alphabetical, trying to figure out which one it was.
Oh, it may have been, was it one of the organizations though? It wasn't vet, but one of the organizations?
Maybe.
So if I remember, this is going back ways, but we probably got the bill, but the financial plan wasn't approved yet.
Oh, okay.
So I'm assuming once the financial plan was approved, we held the invoice until that point.
Okay, I asked Lisa about it, just, yeah, so I'll maybe check with Lisa which one I spent.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions with regards to the financial report?
So then once all the budget numbers are entered, then bottom total service will be zeroed away?
It should be, yeah, the number right at the bottom should be zeroed out.
And then it becomes the, from your budget numbers to the financial, it's determining which category is, that would you have to decipher or what? You can't just go line number one down to 100 or?
To, like entering budget, it's on an account level basis.
Account level.
If you're thinking back to that spreadsheet that we all worked on, we listed all the accounts there, I have to enter them as.
Okay, but so they're not in the same grouping as we would see here then?
It should be very similar.
Okay, so it wouldn't be complicated then to enter?
No, it's a, it's a data entry thing.
Just have to make sure Fassil doesn't go on holidays and then it gives you enough time that you can actually enter.
That's right.
He didn't hear that one.
The hardest part is like the capital items and whatever they have to be put into certain spots and make sure everything balances.
Okay, good, I'm, entertain a mover. Doug Ross, it moves, somebody seconds, councillor huh, seconds, I get that right, okay, and all those in favor please indicate and a vote of any gets carried, thank you. Then we have community service and events report and that starts on about page?
Eight.
Eight. The, anybody have any, like this is for information, does anybody have any questions regarding the report? The one that I have a question on is the beach with regards to the beach patrols versus the lifeguards, that's not something that comes to council, that's just something done at administration level, Fassil? Can you answer?
I have a caller to obscure.
Yeah, she did, but I'm just curious if that's something that would come to council because there's a liability attached to that.
It could be, but that's administrative.
That's an administrative function, so.
Beach patrol or lifeguard, so if we need additional body, then we need to get approval from council, so.
Okay, so how they handle that is up to administration then?
Yeah.
Okay. I, and that would apply to, like several years ago, we decided that we weren't going to have people at the gate collecting money, are we still, is that happening though, we are collecting money at the gate? Like I haven't been there this year, so.
So far I haven't seen another cutting, but I think once they get busy in July, they start putting people on.
Yes, I believe we're in the process of hiring a summer stewardess for the gate, I believe, so we can double check with community services and events planning on that.
Okay, that's good. The, this is under services and events, okay, and that's for information, anybody have any other questions?
Some catch, meeting with liquor, liquor and lotteries about maintenance on setup requirements, is that because we're getting tables and chairs to put up?
I believe so, yes. Do you have any information on that, Patrick?
Nothing more than that, no.
So those tables and chairs are going to be there seven days a week?
I don't think so, we may, we set up every weekend, or whatever weekend is for that event, and that's I believe every last weekend of May, June, July, so may have already done, so.
I believe some of those, those tables and stuff are like some of our portable tables from access events center, I believe.
We've talked about putting tables and chairs up there all the time, so people can sit in there and enjoy themselves and, or you can order food from restaurants and it could be brought down to them, or they could go get it, rather than just zipping in on their shopping and zipping out.
We understand that and that's the longer term, we are going to do that and that's why we assigned funds in 2019 budget, so we'll look into that, but in the meantime, like insurance on business, so we are going to have portable tables and chairs there.
The other thing, meeting with lotteries, are we going to have to put up a fence?
I don't know.
I'm thinking if you're conserving liquor, you're going to, don't tell me how many bathrooms you need, stirring out a little, have to be put a fence down?
It was already done last year, I believe, so I don't know, it was a big hassle.
It was fenced last year, yeah.
Okay. And July 1st is Canada Day of Beef Fest, so I guess that gets communicated out to the public somewhere, good? We just note on here the paddle club, like they're, they've asked the city to look after that, so is that the people that did it before, or is that just for their revenue?
I'm not sure, I have to look into that. Yeah, like they, they asked the city to do it, so we'll keep that.
Before moving on from the community services events report on page two, I just wanted, or page three, sorry, yeah, me six to 12, I just want to command Stephanie to do it for the work she did on mental health week, I got at least a dozen emails congratulating the city and thanking them for the investment they made into this and we, I want to acknowledge the work that Stephanie did on this, I know I was away for it, but it was, I looked at the events lineup and it was very, very well received.
What page is that on?
On page three.
Three?
Just events review.
On the events report, yeah.
Page 10.
Page 10, okay.
It had the grave misfortune of having been closely dated to a very tragic event in our community and so it's very, very, added degree solemnity to it, but I think it's a very good investment and it's well received and well presented by Stephanie, so I want to thank her for her work on that.
Are we with Lisa Kirk's replacement?
Against, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Anybody have any other questions regarding the report? If not, we receive that, and I see Martin coming in, but I don't see him here, because there's this, the resoning and the variation order and subdivision, the information here for your, for information that'll be brought forward to a council meeting at the end of the month, but is.
I think he was last to present.
Oh, he's sitting out there, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't, you can be discussing the actual hearings. No, well, you can't hear it, except if you have questions on it, you can ask.
Martin is here, should he have any questions?
Hey, yeah, if you have any questions regarding it, you can ask Martin. So the only one, hi Martin.
Hi.
Counselor, counselor called right now. Question I have is, you know, it's not a big deal, other than when I look at the proposed development on Livingston Drive, may not say the right new word here, just south of Livingston, Evergreen Drive, I can't see the dimensions on my, on the.
The dimensions of the house itself?
No, yeah, they say it's, you know, the requirement is a 25-foot rear yard, I can't see the dimensions.
I think it's 20.7.
Oh, yeah, it's almost 21 feet, so they're requesting for a 20-foot rear yard.
Okay.
And councillor, it only applies to, there's a portion of the building at the rear of it that's proposed to be a covered veranda.
Okay.
If this was a deck, a flat deck with no, you know, just the railings, it would be permitted as.
Well, the PDF just.
If you hold control and press plus, it will zoom you in, and then control minus will zoom you back in.
Oh, well, you.
Or you can use your, it does show the dimensions.
Well, you can see it, oh yeah, there it is, 20.7, thank you.
Still probably not that terribly clear, there's no impact on adjacent properties, there's nothing to the rear of this property.
Okay, no problem, that'll come forward at council meeting at the end of the month, I just, my thinking is that if people looked at it, they wouldn't be able to see the dimensions, so.
Councillor Hillibrand, you'll recall and councillor Frost, that we have that procedure where we can delegate variance and conditional use, because we haven't dealt with one with this council, we thought it best to advertise this one in a traditional fashion and bring it forward as a standard variance as opposed to posting the decision for appeal, we owe you guys a report on that procedure, we put it in place the end of May of last year, and so I would like to at that time, when we bring that report forward, go through it with council, those procedures that are kind of unique to the state.
Yeah, okay, awesome, thank you very much for that. And so, if anybody has any questions with regards to this, they can ask Martin, the decision will be made at, after the hearings on the head of council or the, this is brought forward for information, so. If that's, anybody have any questions before we move to the deputy city manager report for corporate? Nothing, around the table? Okay, thank you. So then, Patrick?
So the other subdivision one, that was just for information as well?
Which one was that?
Subdivision 4433.
That's the property on Ninth Street South, on the former Hyatt property that was rezoned, I think about this time last year, but they brought forward a condo plan and so it's a subdivision application was necessary of the government and Manitoba planning office, and that's triggered this concern, the sustainable development that has.
Nothing formal to report, just a, just a quick update for taxes, we're almost there, everything's been submitted for requests and stuff, so we should be getting our, the tax bills this week.
For property taxes?
For property taxes, yeah, and we'll have to figure out the downloading and everything for the computers, so.
Okay.
Will be on this week's agenda.
What I was thinking is if Patrick, for your, for, under your report for deputy city manager report, if you could address a couple of items like under your responsibility, which are like IT, finance and community services, like finance for instance, where is the status of our 2017 audit? Secondly, what's the status of our 2018 financial and also where are we at here today with regards to reconciliations and financials and?
Bank records.
A records, yeah.
Bank records are, bank records are up to date now, with Serena's help, there's some outstanding items on them, so we haven't entered the adjustments yet, so she's just waiting on me to kind of review some items and be able to give some correction there. 2017 audit is still in the auditor's hands and we haven't spoken to them lately.
No.
But wanting to do an update this early.
So to get our gas tax in for 2017, we need to submit that, right?
Yes.
So then, yeah, that's what just, wondering if there's some, if we could in a committee of all, just kind of get a, just an update from you on, on the happenings.
Sure.
On the financial side, so, in community service, I know we have it here, from the report of Clark, maybe your executive summary of it would be helpful.
Of, of Clark?
Yeah, of any of these, that you're responsible for, just a high-level, full notes or executive summary, if that wouldn't be asking too much for you.
Not, no, eventually that was kind of what I was hoping for, it's still trying to get there.
No, that's fine, no, I just, when I was looking through it and I was thinking it would be helpful to have that, so. If, anybody have any questions of Patrick? Before nine twenty-three, we move it over to operations. There you go, Doug.
Well, this will be short and sweet, there's only four reports there, first one, facilities report, everybody's read it, questions? Okay, next one, parks, urban, forestry report.
Well, if I can ask, the, the Morton flower situation keeps coming up all the time and I just, is there, I don't know, maybe Fassil can maybe check into it, I guess, find out, I mean, I think we're using Fiesta to spray some of the boulevards, doesn't look like they've had any attention at all.
It's not working.
Right?
It's not working.
Well, and some that they did last year is, you know, like some of, I think if they do it consistently, it'll help.
Well, if you look at our parks, boulevards and everything, like it's just, it's an embarrassment.
Well, I know, they're not being done.
And you also look at, by the school there, that old playground, really bad.
And that's your highest contentious area, that's.
Well, I know I've had a lot of citizens come up to me and express their concerns to me, so I, I'm just, I'm just bringing it forward, so to see if we can pay some more attention to, to the chemical spray, or not chemical, to the organic sprays that we are authorized to use, and we are, we can use a chemical once, if they're not adjoining like parks or individual residents, so, like along the railway tracks, we can use that, and some of the boulevards, so bring that forward.
Is our mowing contract, do they report two parks or?
Shaun, yeah.
I know it's later on the agenda, but the graveyard needs some desperate attention.
No?
Oh, I've got it there, it's a disgrace.
Right now?
Yes.
I drove by yesterday on the other way.
You should go in there, it is terrible.
I drove through it on Saturday morning and it's not in great shape.
They are not fixing upgrades that are sinking?
No, that's not, that's not the whole.
Who's, who's is it?
The family.
The whole, the whole place is a disgrace right?
Well, that's not.
So that's coming, I've taken pictures of it down here and I'll show them to you.
Yeah, it's coming down with agenda six point four.
I'm sorry to interrupt, it's kind of my attention that I missed a presentation that was supposed to be on today's agenda, Ken Rimmer is here to present and I really said I missed that, so.
Oh.
So when we're done with the operations portion, can we please backtrack to three point O?
Sure.
He went up, I don't know where he went.
He's just at the practice, just to confirm that I missed his, his presentation, so.
Okay, so carrying on that moment, parks, urban, forestry report, as you can see, a bunch of trees he's going to dig out again and just want to know, and he doesn't take a hope for the safety of any trees, he's got to remove trees and there's something wrong with them, so.
We need to address that in fall, I think, with our strategic plan, because I, when I look at his plan moving forward, he's, it's quite aggressive and I'm not sure, like it'll affect our budget for next year, so we need to look at that.
Okay, are there more questions on that, water treatment report? Am I going to get any questions there?
Well, I guess we're doing everything on the water that we're supposed to be doing, so we don't have the same issue we have in previous years, so I don't know what to say.
Well, hopefully everything is good, like I say, it depends on weather and what is happening there.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no questions on utilities, that's it for operations.
All right, nine twenty-eight.
Can you come in and?
Yeah, we're going to backtrack to agenda item number three, the presentation with Ken Rimmer, if he's still in the building. In July, okay. Okay, agenda item number six, committee of the whole, point one, fire chief report, we recognize Chief Tisa.
Want to back bench report or should I come up first?
It's your choice, we can hear you.
Okay. Any, any questions that you may have for me?
Is there a fire van still?
Nope, Saturday's raining, take care of that, but we did put it on on Friday.
Yeah.
Not knowing what the weather's going to do, we had our thirty at level four on Friday afternoon, so we put it on, but it was removed on Sunday, Sunday afternoon.
If I can ask you a question regarding Code Red, you're the manager of Code Red, right?
I am the guy that pushes the button, yes.
Wow.
I am not the manager of Code Red.
So who is?
Darlene was.
Okay.
Did you have any questions on that, maybe?
No, I'll give it to Fassil to deal with it.
Okay.
I'll forward it to Andy.
Good, as long as somebody's responsible for it. Well, that's, we pay money for it and we need. Well, that's, we pay money for it and we need to use it and it needs to be utilized.
Yeah, we're, we're not using it the way it can be used.
No. And so therefore, we need to address it and I, I just.
What, what type of use would you like to see?
Well, water breaks and that. You can put the circle. Yep, anybody gets fucked up Code Red, yep. Instantly tells them that, okay, the water wouldn't be shut off. Right now, guys, the door, door.
Yeah.
Knock them on doors, so.
Exactly, right. There's, there's options there that we are not using. As far as the weather use, um, I think we're using it the way it's supposed to be used.
And you test it once a year, do you?
We test it twice a year.
Twice a year, okay.
How much are we paying for a P.O.?
Not, uh, uh, it's.
Sorry?
How much are we paying for it?
I don't remember.
Before?
Uh, it's around seven thousand, I think.
Seven thousand, hardly?
Yeah.
And that?
Yeah.
You know what, and it's, we're joined with other municipalities on that, so our net cost is less.
We're joined with Stanley, yeah.
And Pembina?
Uh, no.
You don't think so? I, okay.
They, they have, they have their own.
I think it's under our budget. Well, I keep meeting these people at the trade show. I've been over in, in Quebec, I meet them in Winnipeg, I mean, you know, and they, yeah, we, we got to come in and talk to you. And your name seems to come up, so.
They're, uh, they're, they have their own system. They pay their own contract. Our contract is with, uh, Armistand only.
But it is a good system.
Excellent.
So once you're, you're registered to it, anywhere in the world you go, there's Code Red, you get the alerts. So like it is, it's just, we're not utilizing it to a stone dollar.
Yeah, I agree.
And Brad could use it. You've got, you know, the community that you.
It's a matter of having somebody that designated that can, knows how to use it, knows what information should and should not be.
Well, they have the responsibility to do, look out for the alerters.
It's too bad we don't have a communication coordinator. There are a lot of features on there.
The training, uh, the training to use the, the Code Red, uh, that training is available anytime. And we just, we just did a, a class roughly about a month ago.
Oh, my God, I think it was September or March. I think it was.
Yeah, March. Anyway, that was where, um, Armistand and ourselves put together, went throughout, whole afternoon, trying to get on the system.
Okay, well, we'll leave it with, uh, with administration then.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Uh, call wise, we are, um, quite a bit less than last year. So we're on the, uh, slow time, which is good.
You do want, I mean, the, here's one you want less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, now I don't have any other.
Um, yeah, just for information, our, um, uh, washing extractor is arriving this afternoon. So we're in the process of installing that to our guys at your clean.
Can we bring our laundry to you?
Yeah, charge it.
New best new service.
I gotta get some money back, buddy.
Good, Brandon, that's it.
All right, six point two, agenda item, police chief report. I recognize, she can do that.
Oh, yeah, well, uh. Well, we considered it pretty late, so it wasn't part of the agenda, but then backtrack. You're not going to.
This is where I'd ask if you have any questions about my report, but you didn't get it.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we got it.
Just late. That one, what was I doing?
We saw it.
Apologize for that. Uh, that one slipped through my schedule somehow, but, so you did get it.
Yep, you did.
Not sure if everybody had a chance to read it.
I read the report and then I got really bored reading the stats.
I always go for the stats.
I don't blame you. I don't blame you.
You go to the stats.
Right away, right to the stats.
Good for you.
So we noticed our stats are up from last year.
Yeah.
Probably about eighty, maybe so, from last year. As far as the report itself, I think the, the one thing I'll point out, and it'll kind of, uh, trail into the June report of our stolen vehicles, but we have one stolen vehicle in May. And some cars gone through. Uh, that seems to be continuing, unfortunately. And we recovered one stolen vehicle yesterday here. And we're not sure yet if it's related to the, the previous ones, but that seems to be, uh, it seems to be something that we're going to be dealing with now a little more, I think, with summer coming on. And the, the meth issues.
Are people leaving keys in their vehicles?
Absolutely. Every single one of them, the keys were in it.
And unlocked with my brother and sister-in-law.
You're leaving the keys in the ignition.
Well, there is a vehicle. Um, we don't always get the truth, the accurate information, because they're scared to tell us that.
Yeah.
NBI will cover it. And I think they're concerned about the non-covering. If they can say they left their vehicle or left the keys in their vehicle, so. You know, i- it's one of those things, if they don't see a key in a vehicle, they're moving on to the next one, right? So they're, they're, they're difficult to hotwire nowadays, the newer vehicles, so there's not a lot of that going on. So we look for opportunities with keys, right? So that's unfortunate.
That's low hanging fruit.
It's unfortunate, so. These vehicles were recovered, all the vehicles were recovered, they're just destroyed, so.
Domestic complaints are, you know, they're ongoing and it's, they're hard to deal with, I think.
They're, they're continuous and as a result, um, from those, there's a lot of breaches of conditions when we're loose these people. They're, they're reaching those conditions or conditions we put on them or the conditions that the courts put on them after. And we're dealing with a lot of those, just like they're revolving or they keep reaching. If they're not to contact or communicate each other, they're doing that. So that's certainly what's driving up a lot of their numbers right now.
I noticed on there the mental health calls, or like is that growing up or is that?
That, those are on the rise too. Um, it's a combination of mental health issues and substance abuse and can be one or the other, or usually it's a combination.
The issue with regards to the cannabis store being in orbit versus your issues that you've had with cannabis, it hasn't increased, has it?
No.
That part of it. I just noticed one there, um, was focusing in on it, but.
Yeah, no, just, uh, we just noted it in.
Yeah.
There, there hasn't been a noticeable increase in anything related to cannabis.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Anyways, regarding luring, where, uh, regarding child pornography, possession, distribution, uh, luring, are these, are these typical numbers? Is it, is it one or two a month? Is that?
Right.
Has it always kind of been like a couple a month?
It seems to be lately.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is it, is it new, uh, I don't want to call it business, but like new offenders?
Yeah.
Uh, like, okay.
Yeah.
So not known, not previously known to police?
No.
Okay.
No, if it's noted again, we'll, we'll do a separate incident. If it's a follow-up from previous one with charges, we'll note that.
Okay.
So these are, unfortunately. And those are, uh, those take a considerable amount of resources and time to investigate involving, electronic equipment being walked through by the IT people in Winnipeg and so forth.
Is that where you send it to? Your computers, do you confiscate the computers and iPhones and?
Usually to Winnipeg, uh, but there's also a, a place in Ottawa, with certain situations where we can't get into, even Winnipeg can't get into, so you have to send them on to Ottawa. But then there's a cost incurred in doing that, so for us, which is very expensive. Where we just ran into our first one here the other day. So there's probably a price tag of about two to three thousand dollars just to open up a phone.
Well, I guess you can't take those to chance, right? I mean, you have to.
No, yeah, and you have to do a complete investigation. Because then there's no point in taking something to court half investigated it's going on.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on the police report?
We'll, we'll put you on the spot of the Brad.
Absolutely.
The, uh, Chair of the Police Commission in Winnipeg, was that distracted driving?
Not sure. I, I, yeah.
You mean the vehicle landed up in the building?
No, 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 no. Sorry, selfie, selfie.
Well, that's selfie.
Oh.
So isn't one touch like? That's not the, the, the one touch thing is not for that purpose. You shouldn't be.
Well, yeah, I agree.
The one touch is for GPS and, and directional, right? Because you can use your phone for GPS for, for mapping and writing, that sort of thing. Definitely not for selfies, obviously.
Don't try it.
I think from top of the foundation, I guess, for, for the officers.
All right, six point three, if, if there's no other questions, comment, did you have any other comment you wish to?
No, I just wanted to just bring to everyone's attention, if anybody did not see or did not realize, we advertise for obstacles and issues, so. So, uh, I mean, we received one application so far, but they have until the end of June to, for the first phase. Our application process, it's a, it's a lengthy, a lengthy procedure, not an ideal time over the summer months, with it being busy on our part and then, uh, myself and my two sergeants are the ones that go through all the applications and do all the testing and interviews and so forth, along with, uh, Mary Ann from H.R. So by the end of June, we, we should have some answers to have a shortlist for the next group. And then they will have other documentation such as physical fitness testing, eye exams, written exams to be after.
This, uh, the one that you're dispensing, is that, uh, with experience or though?
Well, that would be nice. We're going, I'm hoping we're going to have a.
The one that you did have, was that what you said you had one application that?
Oh, no, no.
No experience?
No.
So that'd be a brand new, okay. That's good.
One application seems to be a shortlist.
Yeah, that's a very, right at this time, it's a very short list. I'm really hoping to have more.
Well, if you want something to throw, I'll send mine over.
Okay.
We have to pile that way.
A or B pile?
Yeah.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, six point three, the circ emergency plan for 2018.
Twenty eighteen?
Yeah, it was like provided on an email.
There's a drive link if you.
Yeah.
Go back to.
A lot of reading.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, and I couldn't format it to be a PDF file. There was just a lot of active links and stuff like that, so Darren said it was probably best just to send the link as well. So I did include that on the initial agenda email.
Can you move around this or?
Yeah, it needs to be approved.
There's a button, that's their button. Just to get it on the floor, I'll make, I'll move.
Other questions or comments about the emergency plan?
I don't know whether we've ever, have we ever needed this, uh, like, I know we need the, the, the circuit, but have they ever been activated or?
The little state of emergency type of thing.
Yeah, has there ever been any lead?
More things.
I can't, I can't recall. I can't recall.
So the policies are just generic then, and just in case there is a?
I mean, I know we got involved in the big flood there a number of years ago.
I was going to say.
For accommodation more so.
For Morrison.
Yeah, and food for the Sanvangers and.
Yeah. Well, every once in a while, there is a, a call that, uh, when they do test their, the circuit plan, emergency plan, you'll get phone calls and the mayor has to do some special announcements and things and. But, uh, I don't think, we haven't been subjected to that yet as this council.
Well, they have those drills.
Yeah.
Once a year, I believe, in different locations, and that's, I think, when all that takes place.
All right, other comment on the plan itself or we get to go to a vote?
Follow your question.
All right, uh, to approve the emergency plan, uh, in favor, please indicate opposed, non-promotion carries. All right, item six point four on the agenda, graveyard conditions, this is Councilor Maddox.
Well, while you guys were in Quebec, I was up with Councilor Heber Donna. Tuesday or Saturday or Sunday, we went past the graveyard, Old Number Eleven, and the graveyard was an absolute disaster. They hadn't mowed it in, looked like, two weeks. Um, so I sent out an email to the mayor and we got hold of Fossil and they were in there that night, the next morning, and they mowed it. That's about all they did. They just went zipping around headstone. Last Friday, I went out again and I took these pictures. And that's the condition of our graveyard. That's just the mowing part. Um, there's headstones that are sitting like this because the ground is sunk. Nobody's taking care of that. It is, it, it's a disgrace.
Is this in Hillside or?
Hillside, if I'm incorrect. And I noticed Sunday, is it Sunday? They were out there mowing. I don't know if they got the weed either, so again, I didn't go back Sunday. But it's, it's unacceptable.
I just know we had a family headstone sink and it was the family that did the repairs, so.
Yeah, and I don't think that's how it's supposed to be.
And we had to do my parents.
I think that's how the cemetery is set up.
We used to go out there and, and put topsoil in and level them off, but now, well, I don't know when that's changed.
Yeah.
Should that lot be up to whoever buys that plot?
Yeah.
They paid for putting the headstones in.
Yeah, we used to do that. We used to level them off.
As a family, we.
Because when, uh, Mr. Leckman and Mr. Funk were doing it, we were always in there, bringing in topsoil with the skid loader, leveling these plots out.
Well, that's something we should, uh, Fossil or Patrick will have to check on and see.
But anyhow, the mowing is, and you know, it's not just, I went by Morden Park and the grass under the bleachers on nine and twelve is starting to grow right through the seeds. Like, we had three weekends in there, we had festivals in there with big tents set up in our, in our park. It's just a disaster too. It's like our mowing people are just not getting to the job.
You should add the ballpark to that.
Ballpark is bad.
Bleacher studio.
Well, I was at, uh, Friday with Councilor Hunt, um, doing garbage pickup at the park with, uh, elementary school kids. Uh, and some places, it was knee-high and the weeds were just, you couldn't see the damage for the grass.
Yeah. So whoever's in charge, the mowers, they've got to get on these guys and get them.
Sean, right?
We'll look into that.
Yeah.
Just getting back to the cemetery as well, I know a couple of years back when, uh, Doug, I was about to contract, my neighbor, who's an elderly guy, right? And he hired him just to do the cemetery, that's all he did. He was there at least three full days a week and the thing was pristine because he weed whacked around all the headstones. Everything was perfect shape. It, it does look bad, and I totally agree.
Just so you know, in, in those days, it was fifteen hundred dollars a mow. Uh, so you're paying fifteen hundred dollars a week to mow the cemetery.
Well.
The part is.
Well, we hired somebody to do it and they're not doing it. That's what I'm saying. You know, it's, it's, it's terrible. But our people are buried there and, and it's just a disgrace, the way it is right now.
With regard to sinking plots, um, maybe administration can come back with some options on whether they recommend we take over custody and control that or whether we leave it to families?
No, I got Sean's email, uh, this morning and he's working with the contractors, so he's already, he's already asked questions to them. I'm going to be with it, uh, Sean, this afternoon as well.
Okay.
I know rain events, um, affect day of mowing, mowing, but like you say, they mowed on a Sunday. Um, and we've been out in the Gulf Coast and that's maybe not the day to, to mow, as families are.
Going to visit.
Visiting on a, Sunday would be a most logical day.
While we're talking cemetery, my, I'd like to focus in on the, uh, columbarium that we have there that still has the original tape on it to hold the, uh, whatever you call it, compartments. And so I was just wondering if, uh, you could also look at, uh, the policy on columbariums and how we're dealing with that and who's dealing with it.
The weather's taken some of it off. I was through there this Saturday.
Yeah, I know.
It's, it's two years now. Are we pre-sold it now?
That's, we need to have a look at the policy for it. That's, we need to have a look at the policy for it. They need to be pre-used, because that's the only way you're going to sell it, so. The people from, who we bought it from, who live it from, they, Nelson Memorials would be glad, to Nelson Grant would be glad to help us come up with a plan or a policy on, and that person.
We currently have nothing in our, we have nothing currently in the cemetery bylaw addressing columbariums. So it's, it's kind of free for all at the moment.
Well, I guess you need to address that.
Yeah.
Somebody?
We, councillor Hunt tonight, with the, with the new cemetery, we're, we're looking at perhaps just a new amalgamated bylaw for all, for all cemeteries.
Okay.
And address those issues in one, in one way rather than having a bylaw for Hillside and a bylaw for the other.
Okay.
Get it all in one place at times. There's no confusion.
Yeah, that's good. I know it's, you know, like, just in addressing the tombstones, I don't know, I know you leave it up to the families, but there's some that were buried a hundred years ago and those families, the connections are gone.
Families go away.
The other thing I wanted to just mention is, the, the Jewish cemetery has a separate section in there which is fenced off. And in the past, I know we have asked for permission from them to, like, they had a bigger area section in the cemetery. And we shrunk it down and they've given us those plots. If we could ask, I'm not sure who in the, who the provincial body is that looks after that. If we could ask them, because there's, not even half of theirs, their plots or their, the area that they have fenced off is, is, have tombstones in it, so. Maybe they would give us some more, allow us to use it, seeing our cemetery as well. So we, we could move the fence for them.
Well, their fences are down now. It's laying there in pieces.
Is it?
Yeah.
So that needs to be addressed too. So I know we don't have that, community isn't in our area anymore, but I'm sure there's a provincial body that's. I have some friends that are in the Jewish community that I could probably connect with if you need them also.
All right, six point four. Anybody else have questions or comments on six point four? We'll move to six point five, the city manager report.
So I was away last two weeks for planning FCM conferences, and I was sometime away with the family. And I keep working with, excuse me, City of Winkler and the Arnold Stanley Waste Water Treatment Plant. And we already submitted an application, but still we were doing some other, because I promised to get some more information, so we were working on that. And we provided all that information. Actually, Patrick, he provided that information in my absence. And also I'm working on this for the management plan to be submitted to the Sustainable Development. And I'm working with the vision supervisor on that as well. And catching up with my emails, so there are a number of things needs to be addressed, so I'll be very busy next week.
Thank you. Six point six, mayor report. I likewise was attending the FCM with our city manager. And I think we need to, on the matter of FCM, we need to standardize a policy with regard to the FCM. I had a conversation, a couple of conversations about this. I think there's a lot of value there. But we need to determine what we want to make of it. And the investment that we do make into the FCM, we want to see returns out of it, so we need to, we need to develop a strategy for achieving that. It was, yeah, it was a good time. And there was a lot of, a lot of good information there. Had two, two meetings regarding the wastewater. The one was, was very productive. And provided a lot of insight for us into how to deal with the good capacity issues. And some best practices from a former employee at the Sustainable Development. Tyler, are you dealing with Tyler Nishan, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so I had a conversation with him as well, that they had sent out, I guess, they're sending out a letter. And I'm happy to see we're not kicking this thing down the road. That's what kind of deals it.
I'm working with.
Yeah, because we can't, I, I don't want to see us have to spend another million dollars on another sale. Just in time to get the regional wastewater treatment plant, right?
We need to provide a shot term charter plan until we got our wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah. And of course, it was a bad year for it because of the heavy snowfall and, and those types of things. But it's, it's hopefully a short-term solution. External organizations. We're doubling some numbers here, so we'll, I'll just renumber them. Six point seven, and we'll just, starting with Boundary Trails Health Center AGM, I'll start, restart the number in six, seven, and so on down. So everyone will just get incrementally to higher.
So I need to do myself a thirty second every minute.
Sure. So under external organizations, what is six five, we're relabeling it six seven just for continuity. The Boundary Trails Health Center AGM invite. We have an invitation to the AGM. I'm not actually sure what they want from us on this.
Because there's a golf tournament, isn't there? They're asking us to sponsor.
Well, that's a separate one.
Yeah.
Was it an invite to their?
It's just an invitation.
The AGM is just an information update, right?
So it just needs to be RSVPed. It's just whether, it's just all around your invite if you want.
Can, I would plan to attend this, I guess, seven, seventeenth or month, if I'm around. Let's see here.
You're not coaching?
What day of the week is that?
Monday.
Oh, I am coaching. No, not. The tournament is that weekend, so soccer will be done until August, so I can go to that one.
Seventeenth is Monday.
Yeah, I'll be good to go.
Okay.
Excuse me, just one minute, I put my schedule, otherwise I'll forget. There we go. All right, so we'll receive that as information. Six point six, which we're going to relabel as six point eight, Boundary Trails Health Center Golf Tournament Sponsorship Request.
That is, that I'm pretty sure is part of our manual policy.
Yeah.
One of the standing ones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. For the other golf tournament that's in Miami that we got to, did we determine?
They were just opposed.
Yeah, did we determine who was going, who was golfing in that? We might as well send golfers if we're.
Was that not left to, to city staff?
Okay, yeah.
I didn't have anybody telling me who was going, who wasn't going.
Okay. Hey, we'll have to go back on that one, figure what we're doing. On this one, what is the policy on this one?
Which one, Boundary Trails?
Yeah.
We have a list of annual requests such as this, which, which are the policies. We don't necessarily, we don't have to approve it through council now. It's part of that policy.
Okay.
So would we sponsor for, I'm not sure.
I think it's fifteen hundred.
Yeah, I think.
You get a, you force them.
So I would love to sponsor, be a whole sponsor?
So this is out of the, what, forty thousand dollars?
That's what we have in the past. We've passed on that one.
Okay.
So we can look at the policy before approving it?
I, I don't think, I, I don't think we have to approve because the policy says we can just do it.
I think we can just do it.
Yeah.
Do you know which policy? Is that?
Yeah, it's the, I think it's the annual grant, annual grant.
Is that the one that we have forty thousand dollars left or something?
It would come out of that account.
It would come out of that account.
There's a specific policy that lists maybe four or five of these organizations that we kind of do every year. So there was a, a policy passed to say, okay, we're just, we approve these every year.
Okay, but and we still money, we haven't spent all that, that budgeted.
Uh, no, no.
Because we have a different level of sponsorships.
I'm pretty sure that policy does save fifteen hundred.
Yeah, I haven't seen it in a while.
Okay. If, if the policy conforms to the, one of these categories, and both the policy, if price has gone up, then we'll, we'll reconvene before this to.
They're asking for two here though, aren't they?
Yeah.
They're asking for that golf thing in August, and they're asking for participating in the annual gala. There, I think, we've done a table of eight. That would be the twelve hundred dollar one, but I don't know for sure. Have to check and see.
Didn't we go to that last year?
They have no tickets from the mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we had tick, I had my own ticket last year. I didn't go on the city, yeah. I had my own ticket.
So we can push this. If we need, for the gala, if we need separate resolution, we can move it to July. And so there's lots of time. Okay, the Canadian Student Debate Grant Request. This is an event coming in September. It's the first time to hold the National Student Debate in Morton. Michael MacRae is, is contact for this. He's, Molly Wheeler, who is making a request to be the youth member for council. She won the National Student Debate last year with Michael as her coach, and now the event's coming here. I met with the organizers and they've put in a request for financial support. It will bring in a hundred and twenty students, their parents, and their, the teacher coaches for debate for, for five days, actually six days, I guess.
So asking for a thousand dollar?
No, five.
Five thousand.
Four, five.
One to five.
One to five.
Well, go to the next page.
Yeah.
Is this a one-off totally?
This is a one-off.
Like, I don't know what everybody else's feeling is. This is a Western School Division thing. I know it's coming to the city of Morton, but it's, like, we're, like, our budget is tight, but without having to go back to our taxpayers all the time. I'm wondering if we, you know, give them a thousand dollars kind of thing, rather than committing to the, to their maximum that they're asking.
It's a.
Because I know they've got a, we can give them gold sponsor donation of a thousand to five. And so there's a silver of two hundred and fifty to a thousand, there's a bronze up to two hundred and fifty. So if we want to get into the gold level, I would suggest that we, we go to the, the thousand dollar level.
So if they're doing a thousand one, I will be back in the silver.
No.
Well, I know, but they, they.
Yeah, okay, do a thousand one, whatever.
Thousand one.
Indicate it's a gold sponsor. That'd be my suggestion.
My, my only, I, I would offer some commentary on this. To say that if it was a sporting event, where we're bringing in a hundred and twenty of the best teams, we would have no problem supporting this. And sciences, academia, those kinds of things often get pushed to the back as, as secondary. And I would just provide that as, as, for any work, in some kind of context, to say that these are a hundred and twenty of the best in the country coming here for six days. And if it was, if it was sport, we'd have no problem.
I don't know. Looking at our budget numbers, I think we would. I think we've got some sponsorships this year. We've dropped some. I think we need to have a look at what we are sponsoring until we get a, a real good handle on our, on our budget.
How often does a school come to us with events that they're hosting on a national level? Do they come that often?
I do agree with councillor Hillret, because I, I do really think this is a school function.
Yeah.
We pay very high school taxes. And it's, I guess it's not just that, but let's say we're hosting a number of provincial playoffs and baseball, hockey. I mean, are those people, I mean, we get a bunch of people coming in from that too, from all over, maybe not Canada, but from Manitoba for sure, maybe even Canada, the Westerns. And we've never responded to them, change of logo. Just my opinion.
You eighteen says, does that fall into? That's a national event, right? And we're sponsoring it.
But that's, I guess that's the city of Morton event, because this is a school event, right?
Yeah.
It's a school event, but, but it's still.
Still a city of Morton.
For the city of Morton, I could, this is.
So the Canadian Student Debate Federation exists independently of, of school ports. We, we, they, they are currently paying to use the facility, so they're going to be six days in Access Plan Center. Would we be okay sponsoring it to the level of reimbursement of that cost?
What's the cost?
I think, I'm not sure. I think it's four hundred a day or something.
Well, I'd just say, I'd like to see somehow we sponsor them a little, a bit, you know? There's other events that come through this town we do sponsor. And, you know, right, we do pay a lot of school taxes, but this is a unique thing.
It's youth.
I don't have, I don't have an issue with the sponsor, really. I just think, oh, five thousand's too much, that's all.
Well, you know, I'm not saying we spend the whole five thousand, I'm just.
You know, the ask is, and I've been on these fundraisers, you don't ask for the lowest number, you ask for the highest number. So I'm saying is that they have bronze, they have silver, so move into the gold sponsor, which is the top category, just at the entry level of the gold. So that's, I would move, I'd suggest it as a motion.
In that gold sponsor, there's a thousand to five thousand.
That's right.
In, in the gold sponsor, it's about a thousand.
Yeah, a thousand's the low and five's online.
So you're moving.
So he's saying just get the minimum of the gold, gold level.
I'd be willing to say that.
Yeah.
What if we did fifteen hundred, which covers the cost at our facility?
Well, it's void right now for a thousand.
All right.
I'll turn it down and then we'll bring another motion to the floor. Call for the question.
Sure. Okay, so on six point.
Seven, or is it?
Six, seven, on the general, which is six, nine, numerically, the student debate grant request for a donation of one thousand dollars. In favor, please indicate. Opposed?
But if you, if you oppose that, then you could go higher. Is that not what I'm hearing?
No, I, I have good deal with each resolution, good faith.
Okay.
Yeah. If.
Let's call it in.
All right, in favor, please indicate. Opposed? Not motion carries at one thousand.
Actually, the gold level, so long as we're in the sponsorship.
If it's a thousand and one, we make it a thousand one, but it's just the way that they've got it ordered here.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we just back up a step to back to the Boundary Trails one?
Yeah.
Just pulled up that policy, so the CAO can approve up to fifteen hundred for the golf fundraiser and twenty-five hundred for the annual gala. So both those items are in the policy for CAO.
So no motion required.
No motion required.
So then we just have to determine if staff is golfing or council and we attend.
Yeah, we should, yeah, we should find someone to attend.
That out.
Can we get?
I just hate to see it go bad.
Go to waste.
If it screws up a golf tournament, if nobody shows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we get a, a running number at some point on where we are with grants and what's left?
For like the individuals?
Yeah, sure, what's left in the, in the annual. In the annual. Budget there. All right. Uh, six point ten, which is six point eight numerically. Um, Cornapple requests out of the city, sorry, I just, there we go.
That hasn't gone to, to staff yet, has it? This is District Street, it's a committee of all. Normally staff would review this and let us know if there's any issues with regards to the ask.
I guess all the yellow ones are the new ones.
Yeah. There is, they always come up with a few additional requests every year. Just want to make sure that it's not an issue with regards to staff being able to accommodate what their ask is.
Yeah, I think, I think normally it went like to Brad and to Les.
Yeah. But yeah, it's, it's getting to the point where it's stretching some of the staff pretty good. Like there is a water setup, another one, bleachers taken out by Green Valley.
Well, that's because of the mud bog.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We used to deliver them over to Huron, so.
They did that last year too.
Location, that's all.
But those kind of, the, so for example, we'd have to take out additional insurance if they move it somewhere else, which we had to do for the mud bog last year. So any kind of moves like that, which isn't within, because it's not within the city limits. So there's, there's other considerations.
Can we then leave this, can we revert, like, does it, what's it time sensitive here? Is this something we can swing back to, uh, administration to come back? I just still want to make a commitment from council's perspective and then we find out that, um, they're not doable.
So we can look into that and think back to.
Council, okay. Appreciate that. I wonder if during this, um, um, I know this letter that says that they are gonna, I don't know how to word it. With the condo being constructed along Stephen Street where the, um, Cornapple and Chamber Commerce Building used to be, apparently there's a change, uh, in, in that building. So that there might be some problem with regards to the corn husker being in that location. So I wonder if we could confirm that too, that it'd still be where that location's gonna be.
I can really comment on that.
Yeah.
Council, right.
Yeah.
Dale Stambus came to see me last week in regards to rearranging some things or other.
Yeah.
They want to, they want to keep the corn, um, uh, distribution and cooking at that location to central to, to the festival.
Yeah.
They just requested to have the back lane, uh, closed so they could put the steamer there. And, uh, I wouldn't allow them to do that. So we made a, a couple of, um, uh, requests that the steamer be put on the, uh, west side of, uh, Nelson. Or sorry, not Nelson, on, um, yeah, so Nelson.
Yeah.
Uh, kind of, uh, on the boulevard.
You mean closer to Olympic Sporty?
Yeah, on, on Olympic Sporty, like a little bit farther north, like on the north side of the.
Of the back lane.
Back lane.
Yeah.
But the back lane is still open.
Yeah.
And, uh, put their steam lines, uh, across the back lane with the, with the ramp.
Oh.
So if, if we do need to get through there, because that is our fire lane.
Yeah.
It's the only way we get to downtown. They were going to look into doing that. So, uh, they would have to, uh, have consultation with Sean, whether or not, you know, what they need to do to support that machine on the boulevard. So we would, uh, go to break the boulevard, that type of thing. So that, that talk is going.
Okay.
Um, and also the, um, the trailer that they store all the corn and stuff in, it was normally behind that building.
Yeah.
And, but still left the back lane open. They were going to approach Olympic Sports to have it on the west side of their building.
Oh.
And they would just use the back lane behind his shop to, uh, to supply the corn and things like that. So it's still gonna be in that spot, just things are being rearranged, but there needs to be some, um, okay's being done.
Can I just, you're in charge of that and that's good because then I've got a comfort level. Because those, those hoses are, it's not cold water going through, they're extremely hot.
No.
So as long as there's safety with regards to that, like I know for the washrooms, you have, uh, blacktop or you have some kind of.
There's some ramping, yeah.
Yeah, but that's cold water. Now here you got it, like very hot water.
And they were gonna have, uh, the welding shop, the high school welding shop.
Yeah.
Build a, a frame with a ramp with kind of like, build the drop zone.
Yeah.
Or the hose.
Channel.
Yeah, channel, yeah, exactly. And then so access over that would be quite simple.
Okay, good. Well, thanks. Yeah, just stay on top of that, that'd be good.
Yeah.
And.
The, and that, uh, was it gonna be on the west side, that reefer truck?
Uh, on the west side of Olympic Sports, yes.
Is that, some of that, is that Access Credit Union's parking area?
Um, it would be their parking, but I think, yeah, right beside, uh, Olympics.
Right beside their.
Yeah.
West of Olympic is Credit Union.
Is that?
Yeah.
Then, yeah, however they, that's, that's where our suggestion was, that he was gonna look into finding the commissions.
And the Husker part, where, where would that be?
Uh, the Husker part would still be, uh, right on the corner, uh, the, the southwest, the southeast corner of.
Same as there was.
It just moved a little bit more into the street.
Okay.
Yeah. Because it's, uh, we have to be off of its property. Or off of the Congo's property.
So nothing can go on that Congo property north of the proposed garage? Or south, I should say, south of the proposed garage?
Yeah, I'm not sure how, how the building and all that stuff set up there, but.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot tighter.
You talk about that semi, could it not go across the street beside the building where the other one sits by itself?
Uh, that's the, uh, the cider, the cider trailer.
So could it not be side by side? You'd have to haul the corn across or anything for the box.
Yeah, it's way too busy.
Oh, I see you're going with box, you know, I thought you just brought boxes with.
No, no.
Okay, no.
Huge.
Just, yeah, I'm not down there when that's happening, so.
Oh, we have to get your job.
No, I'm cooking beef, a little down the street there, thanks.
That, so they may have, they may have to ask, uh, Access for permission. You know, that's when we have problems.
Okay.
Back in February, February, we, uh, had discussed the possibility of having a city tent, uh, for the festival. And making that a standard thing that councillors and go to. Considering where we are with communications budget, I haven't had a chance to talk to Victor about how much buffer room he has in his budget. But whether or not that could be something that would be achievable this year. The Corn and Apple has said they would save us a double space.
You know, would be a good spot for that alongside the, uh, First Aid?
Information.
Or you're right, just north of the information, yeah, where the First Aid station is. That'd be a good spot.
You just get one of those pop-up.
Yeah.
Tents.
Yeah.
Do we want, do we, do, do you want me to bring a resolution to this end or to see whether Victor has?
Yeah, I think we should deal with it with staff first and see.
Yeah. I haven't had a chance to talk to you about that at all, but it was, was a thing. And I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, that Wonder Shows had offered us a certain number of day passes to off, to, to distribute as part of a, as part of a, uh, draw.
Okay. A draw?
That people could come put their names in and get a free day pass.
Oh, and if they come to the booth.
If they come to the booth, yeah. I'll have to go through my emails and find that. All right. Uh, six point eleven, Kids' Board, Sport Manitoba Donation Request, that would be. Here. Okay. Uh, the request is, Dear Mayor Brandon Early, Council, every year many children in the south region are unable to participate in the sports they love because of factors beyond their control. As registration fees increase, less and less families, fewer and fewer families are able to afford them as the financial burden on their families is too high. Sadly, children in these families are unable to reap the many benefits of sports such as leadership skills, hard work, sacrifice, self-confidence, as well as many other skills that will help them both in the sports and their everyday lives. Kids' Board, a national children's charity which has been operating in Manitoba since nineteen ninety-three was created to help keep children playing and to allow them to benefit from their sport experience. Through Kids' Board, every child is eligible to receive up to three hundred dollars per calendar year in assistance. In the south region, over a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred dollars has been provided to five hundred and seventy-five children since two thousand and sixteen to help make their support dreams come true. Kids' Board relies on the support of the local community to meet the needs that exist as no government funding is provided to the program. Kids' Board would like to extend you the opportunity to assist children in the south regions by making a donation to Kids' Board. Your entire donation will stay within the south region, going directly and entirely to children in need. We would like to request a donation of five hundred dollars to Kids' Board, however, a donation of any size is greatly appreciated. If requested, official tax receipts are available for donations over twenty-five dollars. If you'd like more information on Kids' Board, please contact Sport Manitoba South Region Office and so on.
Does that have to, like, is that something that we've done annually too?
I don't think we have.
Never have?
It's a good spot to our budget.
Requests come. Requests come.
Requests come every year, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it's too much they're asking for. Get our children's active and they stay out of trouble.
First thing I was, how much of that stays in this area? They say so, so, but.
Okay.
That would be my biggest question.
Just, you know, like if they're, if they can get them playing hockey or doing something that keeps them out of trouble and that's a, it's a cheap price to pay for some of this stuff.
Don't, don't disagree. There's hundreds of these come forward all the time.
This Kids' Board has an office here in town, do they not? At Donald, by the cornhusker?
No, it's way there.
Yeah, I think they've moved, I think.
Okay.
The youth.
One eighty-eight, one eighty-five entry.
They're in the old, uh, graphic building.
They were here and.
Are you talking about the?
Well, they're part of.
What's her name?
Sport Manitoba.
Kyle, what's her name?
Colleen.
No, she, that's what she used to do.
Yeah.
Chairman of the person.
Colleen.
Colleen.
We did discuss at, uh, council about making programs available to our children, so getting them out there and. Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion that we provide five hundred dollars towards this.
One second.
All right. Five hundred dollars of contribution to Kids' Board is the motion. We'll go to vote.
Could we just sort of throw in as long as it's guaranteed to stay at the center?
Can you put a, a caveat on that donation?
Well, they do, they do say it stays in the south region, now whether they say it stays.
Could make it's paid over Kids' Board Canada, Mountain Pope, so that's, like I say, could they just throw it all in one make, goo, and then I'll throw it all this way? What would they draw from it, don't they?
Well, they, it does say in paragraph four, uh, your entire donation will stay within the south region, going directly and entirely to children in need. So seem a little disingenuous to offer that and then not provide it.
Call for the question.
With or without the, um?
Yeah.
With?
With that.
Well, whatever. I think you can give them five hundred dollars and whoever can benefit from it. But I just know that somebody in Morton would benefit, but whatever.
Okay. The question is, five hundred dollars to Kids' Board. No further questions. Favor, please indicate. Opposed, not, motion carries.
Just speaking to your ask before to have a running total of where we're all giving money to. Because eventually you get, every meeting we get.
Five hundred.
Lots of requests and they're all good. They, don't get me wrong, but just to get a handle on how much we can actually contribute and where it's going.
Yeah.
To properly fund local events.
Okay. Six, ten, numerically, six, twelve, ask, if the numbers run. For Pride rally request, looking at the request, now, this is a bit of a moving target. I know from a practicality sense when this letter was sent, um, the, the prerogative's changed, correct? And the destination's changed, the original, um, sort of road closures, now they're no longer looking for road closures, is my understanding?
No.
You've been more on this.
I, I talked to Dematar two Sundays ago. Because council hadn't met to discuss this, but we've, we've been in consultation as council approving of it. You know, asked, I asked Dematar if they were having a float, if they needed road access, and she said, no. It was all, uh, walking. So between going from Steven, which road closure closures weren't working, to going to Gilmore, which looks like we, um, putting them off, off a main street onto a sort of secondary street, to discussions with her going down Thornhill Street. So they would be going down the sidewalk facing traffic, so there's that added safety, so you can see oncoming traffic. She was receptive, receptive of that. And of course, the flagpole here only being one is kind of a sacred flagpole for the Canadian flag. But at the rec center, it, uh, with the three poles, um, Tim said there, they've flown other flags for other organizations. So, uh, Dematar was, uh, receptive of that. And then there's added parking for people, um, to attend the flag raising. If they don't march, then, so the rec center was, uh, or Access Events Center was, uh, an acceptable location for the flag, raising the flag, so, um, I think what they're doing at the park, they're gathering, and I'm not sure if they're making banners and posters, then doing the walk down Thornhill and they'll go down Second Street to Access Events Center, staying on the sidewalk. And then they'll have, um, greetings and speeches and, and speaking there, so. So if, if council's agreeable and, uh, Brad, I think, yeah.
Sorry, I just had a question. Did you say they're walking, like not down, going down?
No, the sidewalk. Yeah, they're staying, they, they don't have a float, they don't need anything, they're just going.
You just mentioned about safety going on.
Well, they're on the sidewalk and they're facing, so if they spread out, there's, you know, they're, they're looking at traffic coming towards them, but they're staying, yeah, they're on the sidewalk. But the, you know, I'm sure they'll step on the boulevards, so it's just, uh, that buffer. Nope, they're not on the street, so.
Safety issue, yeah.
Yeah. And I think if they're looking for visibility, that's, I mean, Steven on a Saturday afternoon may not be overly busy for, uh, visibility. I think Thornhill will give them the bigger, uh, visibility.
Well, it'd be the issue of trying to get across, depending on many, get across Thornhill to, so. It's maybe a good thing that they.
Yes, yeah, if they're staying on the same side of the street, it's a very logistically easy move, uh, walk down. It'll be getting, going down Second Street, but, um, there is still.
Sidewalks, eh, so they'll be on the road.
There'll be the issue there with Second Street.
Yeah. But, um, maybe we need to have a pilot car for the.
Second has sidewalks on the.
On the east side, yeah.
All the way up to the right side.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
With regard to this request.
I don't know if that's one from the asshole down.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there? Okay. That's a pretty good one, right there.
Yeah, the current public, there's a break and then it starts again, doesn't it?
So have you got any, or anybody to introduce, sorry, to vote as Brad, or?
I don't, to be, uh, just like any other request like this, I never, uh, promise being able to, to provide the, the pilot vehicle because of our calls. I always suggest they have their own pilot vehicle in front and in the back with four-way flashes, right, for safety.
So it sounds like there could be some protestants.
Will, will be.
Here.
Yep. As long as they're doing it.
Pretty obvious enough, I'm probably.
In a reasonable fashion and not blocking, not blocking traffic in these sorts of towns.
Do we have, uh, capacity to deal with a large scale problem? Should, should it turn ugly, which we hope it doesn't?
Yeah, it's called a hundred pounds pressure, yeah.
We, we always have mutual aid. We have our own officers and as well we call upon, just like any other person.
And like I say, let's get the, and say a hundred and fifty pounds pressure, I don't need to fight over anybody.
You can give me a baseball bat and a badge. Crowd control.
I, I'm thinking it'll be, uh, I'm thinking it'll be civil.
Okay.
Like any other protest, though, you know.
Hopefully it, it will be.
In an appropriate area. If it becomes a hazard or a safety issue, then we will be able to, for sure.
Just for the record, I want to insert a portion of the Canadian Human Rights Act into the record, in particular, section two, uh, which says the purpose. Uh, which says the purpose of this act is to extend the laws in Canada to give effect within the purview of matters coming within the Legislative Assembly Authority Department, to the principle that all individuals should have an opportunity to equal, to be, have an opportunity equal with other individuals to make for themselves a lives that they are able and wish to have, and to have their needs accommodated consistent with their duties and obligations as members of society, without being hindered in or prevented from doing so by discriminatory practices based on race, national or ethnic origin, color, religion, age, sex, sexual orientation, gender, identity or expression, marital status, family status, genetic characteristics, disability or conviction for an offense for which a pardon has been granted, or in respect of which a record suspension has been ordered. In addition to section five of the act, which says, uh, regarding denial of goods, services and facility or accommodation, that it is a discriminatory practice in the provision of goods, services, facilities or accommodation customarily available to the general public, A, to deny or to deny access to any such good, service, facility or accommodation to any individual, or B, to differentiate adversely in relation to any individual on a prohibited ground of discrimination. Further, in the Canadian, the, the Charter of Rights and Freedoms in Canada, uh, in Egan versus Canada in two thousand and three, the Supreme Court of Canada determined that the discriminatory practice of, of sex as a base included all forms of gender expression, sexual identity and so on. Uh, so for the record, I want to point out that it is our obligation, uh, as a, as a very base level, to act in the best interest of all members of our community and to act, uh, in a manner that affords them equal rights with all others, uh, and that we treat this as we would treat any other gathering or, or, um, march or the, uh, event that would come to the city and that these acts, we are not permitted to act in a discriminatory fashion, uh, simply because we do not or may not agree with it, as many members of the community may not. Uh, we do not get to legislate what are prohibited forms of discrimination. Um, and we have to be seen to be supportive of it, as well as being supportive of it, because they have these prescribed rights under the Charter and under the Bill of Rights in Canada and the Human Rights Act. And so we need to ensure that as members of our community, that we act in good faith and that we deal with them in good faith according to these acts.
And just to add to that, in City of Morden's corporate plan, under core values, diversity is listed and we accept and embrace diverse cultures, so, it's an intent that council supports.
We've received a significant amount of correspondence, um, calling for the city to either shut this event down or to try to block it. And with regard to these documents and these objectives, um, it is not within our pay grade, even if we had the desire to do it, to do so. Those are matters for the federal government and Supreme Court to decide, and we have to do our obligation. At, at a very base level, we have the, the moral obligation to follow these acts.
So council has been asked to bring greetings, Brandon is going to be away and he's asked if I would fill in, but if anyone else would like to speak on behalf of council at that rally?
Love to, but I'm going to be at the Monster Fest, so I just can't make it.
Okay, but if anyone else wants to bring greetings, so...
The other thing, not on their, not on their request here, that is just the, um, uh...
They're asking.
The, the posting on the city calendar. I don't see it in the ask, um, but, and I don't think there's anything in here we need to have a motion on. Cause everything would be, um, under that umbrella of dealing with in good faith. So if we could just ensure that that happens, um, whether we give a motion on it, I don't think we do, because we do. In that we're dealing with this group as with any other group, we do regard any other group, we afford them and accommodate them in those, in those regards.
Well, Brad, I...
Yeah.
Is it a quick question?
Yeah.
Is anybody having further discussion with the organizer?
Yes.
Okay. If, if they want, um, are you meeting with them in person?
I had not, I, I had, I had been talking with them, but, uh, I know Deputy Mayor Penner had, had, had more conversation than I had.
I just have a connection with them once a week, um, just...
No, I just, I just wanted to know from our perspective that as long as they're not obstructing any traffic
Yep.
on the streets, um, if they are, though, they will be dealt with the same way with anybody
Right.
who, who is causing a disturbance by disrupting.
Now, there may be a traffic delay as they cross, crossing intersection as they go along, but yeah, um, and I, their intent isn't to create outside the, the parameters of a corporate citizen would abide by.
I just wanted to offer that if you are meeting that I...
Yep, no, well...
Now, to you mention, uh, word of...
It will be, it will be, see a different meaning.
Well, her first name's D is Dematar.
Oh, Dematar, oh, okay.
And that's her last name.
It would be fairly hard to communicate these to the, to the protesters, because the protesters...
As long as the organizer would know, yeah, they, they don't have control over everybody.
No, and, and we, we're not going to expect them to have any, to be able to exercise any control over protesters if there are some. But the protest seems to be loosely organized, um, and there are, seem to be some who, um, seem to be, um, irritated, and so we, we just want to, like, we'd have no way of communicating these same rules and objectives to them.
No, not the whole group.
No.
I just thought the organizer would understand.
And we're very, we're very happy that the group has been accommodating, I know for us down here, we have no facilities open on a Saturday at this building. There are no washrooms, so if we have four hundred people coming here, there's nothing here. And, and so the logistics of it, if it does become a crowd control issue, it'd be easier to handle over there than here. And they've been very good in dealing with us on this, and we're thankful that they've dealt with us in good faith, and we intend to deal with them in the same manner.
We, they checked with Claire to make sure that the event center is good, like...
I checked with Tim.
Okay.
And Tim indicated that they would have a staff member there to unlock the, the flag pole to, to raise the flag and that in event of rain, the, they could move inside.
Okay, because there's no events going on there?
There is grad, it's grad weekend, right?
No.
It's not.
Grad's not a weekend, it's always on a Tuesday night or Sunday.
No, but is that not grad party or something?
Not on a Saturday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No?
It's a weekday.
Is it?
Yeah, grad's always...
Yeah, seven, six.
I'm just concerned that there, if the event center had something on, and these guys are...
Well, and I asked him about, um, you know, if the parking lot was full of cars, how could they sort of gather, had a, had a gathering spot? But he said hydro is available right against the building by the flag poles, because they had asked for a speaker system. They're, I think they're bringing their own, but they needed hydro, so...
That's good.
And they're aware that there's hydro available either at the back forty stage or by the washrooms, the, the panels are, are locked, so...
First, I was going to make sure that they're, they're...
Okay.
Is there...
Have you already met with different staff?
I just talked to Tim if, like, um, how to coordinate someone to unlock, like, to raise the flag. He said we can put it up first thing in the morning and they want to do the flag raising at, and I don't know what time it's going to be, three o'clock by the time they get down.
There is, and we are on that too.
Tim was, yeah, but we'll maybe have to confirm with that. It, because nothing had sort of formally come to council, I was just trying to get, um, logistics in place, so the organizers had an idea of what council was providing and options available to them, and then, uh, what this, if... My first question to Tim was, could we even raise the flag there, and he said, he didn't see a problem because other flags have been flown there, so...
So I may set up a management meeting to discuss that further so that all of us should be on the same page.
Yeah.
We may invite you because you have more information on that, so, uh, I'll send you a note on that.
Okay.
Uh, there's, is there anything here that would need, need a resolution, in your opinion?
I would think so.
Business as usual. I, I would, I would refer to the MS Walk as being a template for talking about even operating in equal ways with groups. Uh, MS Walk, of course, they were welcome using the facility, they, you know, walked along our streets, in whatever manner we do, so... I would use that as a template to say this is, this is the, the minimum of the support we should be providing them. Uh, and if, if there's anything else that requires a resolution for, say, access to our calendars or event calendars, if MS Walk is on there, for instance. Uh, and so we're talking about equality, um, I don't think we would need a resolution for this, but if we do, or anything comes up, we will.
The only thing that comes to mind is, uh, is the, the flag, raising the flag, I don't know if there's a policy with regards to, uh, putting in flags other than the Canadian flag, provincial flag and, uh, City of Morden on the flag pole, so I don't know.
There's a practice though, right, so if we're talking about practice, if, if we don't, if we have a policy that comes into effect just for this event, then we're not guaranteed equal access.
No, should be tall, I, I don't know if there is.
Just in discussion that Tim, he indicated other flags have flown there, so I think we should talk with flag.
Some of these hockey tournaments, uh, whatever, they put the flags up, so I get it.
I know.
Corn and apple, united way.
Yeah, we should talk with who, yeah.
Well, I know, I'm just thinking, we know, we have people in the community that are keen on flags, they know where the position of how flags should be, like...
Well, and that's why this one is so...
That's the way they learn, you know, like, so I just want to make sure that we don't disturb that group, so...
Well, currently our flag situation at the, that center is not correct anyway, Canadian flag always needs to be to the far right.
So we're the tallest, you know, the tallest one.
Check with Morris Butler.
I agree.
Yeah.
Cause he came in the number ten, three, three, cause he had it wrong.
Usually it's the center and the tallest flag.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Check, check with Mobler.
I'm just going to take, go and check with Morris Butler, because that's...
The next problem, problem one is on the left-hand side, as you face it.
Here.
It is documented in the policy as well.
I just had that discussion with, with...
Oh, you did, okay, good.
Flag situation, flag protocol. The position of honor is the left side from the point of view or to the right, the farthest right as you stand with your back to it.
Always you stand with your back to it, okay.
So the Canadian flag should be over there, if you're standing, it should be on the right.
Okay, and it's in the middle.
Unless there is a taller flag pole, at which point that would have the, that would have the preference, that is the, that is the official.
I heard it for eight years, I just, I just, no, you just defer everything to Morris Butler.
Yeah, I agree.
He has a book.
Okay.
He doesn't need a book, it's right there.
Yeah, that's true.
He's going to a meeting somewhere in the province, those flags are wrong, so he'd go and tell the organizers.
So are we going to respond in writing to...
How did this come, in writing?
It, it came, if I let her.
Yeah, to respond to this request, I think, because it's changed, uh, so much, uh, at least in acknowledgement of, of...
She's got an email, so we could respond to her by email.
I can't.
And just because her request is, we're changing her request?
Yeah.
It's, I think we just have to do this in a timely manner because they're dealing with the, the media and
Right.
they don't know what to say.
Yeah, I, I, I think we should respond to today.
Okay, so they can go down Thornhill?
Yeah.
They can, uh, put up the flag at the rec center and have their first meeting in the park?
On the sidewalk.
Yep, they know that, yeah.
Yeah, the, well, they'd have to get approval for natural infrastructure for the road, so we just need to address that. Who's going to reply?
It's addressed to the mayor.
Okay.
It's good.
And city council. Which, if it's addressed to all, it should probably go back through the organization, right?
Could be.
So I think Patrick's been dealing, have you been dealing with those so far?
Somewhat, yeah.
Yeah, okay, did you want to reply to it or did you wish for me to?
It doesn't matter, it's up to you, I can't.
You're the head of council, so if they have councillors, it's always the head of council.
Yeah, I can do it, sure, I will reply to them, I'll C C.
That's what you get paid for.
So let me promise that.
The big bucks.
All right, six point one three, any, any other comments or questions concerning regarding six twelve? Uh, Brad, do you have concerns about six twelve, about, about the pride rally that, that we should be aware of?
No.
No, okay, I know in, in dealing with them, I had, fifty years ago, it was Stonewall Riots, right? In York City, it was the first time the police raided, uh, the bar and that started the whole, whole thing. So when I was responding to them and saying, you know, there will likely be police concerns, you know, it's gone along, it's come a long way since fifty years ago.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any concerns.
Okay.
We will have our usual staff on, I'm not bringing in our conditional staff, but like any emergency, we're all on call, kind of course, I mean.
Okay.
I would hate to see an increased presence of police, I just don't, yeah.
When we, uh, when we have this meeting, should we bring Chief Nizak in on it? We were saying we're meeting with her?
Yeah, and he's part of the...
Yeah, okay, good.
Okay, uh, six point one three, Legion Banner Progress Report, uh, which is the, um...
What's the financial cost of this, or the hangers are, so how many do we need, sixteen, the ten, that's one hundred and thirty-seven, that's thirteen hundred dollars, fourteen hundred, fifteen?
So, Ken is saying there's enough poles to do twenty-six, but there's thirteen, sixteen in stock or something.
Yeah, there are sixteen that appear to be in good condition.
Good shape, yeah.
So in other words, we need to buy ten.
If we want them to go the full length of Steven.
But, and then he's saying there are sufficient poles to do thirty.
Yeah.
Oh, which would require more hangers to be purchased, uh, but how many, and they have sold, I'm sorry, I got it.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four have been sold, they're not, they're not finished, right?
Well, but they will stop if...
So there are six more that they could do.
Could do.
Well, let's do the thirty one.
But he was wondering too if the city had an in, another supplier for the hangers that would be, um...
Oh, he got a checker sign, he's got...
Who did they get the hangers from?
He's quoted through checker signs.
Oh, the hangers as well.
But he didn't know who the city got for the original hangers, I thought he would maybe know.
No, they were we, they were...
They've been forever.
So you're talking to two grand?
These aren't going to be in the baskets? The flowers?
No, they, like, the Christmas decorations go up.
So they're going up higher?
Yeah. They're, they're a double, uh, double frame banner, and these ones have a hinge on them for wind.
Yeah.
So, you know, the banner goes...
Yeah, I'm just concerned, like, because a lot of times you put the, well, the flowers drop now, so...
Yeah, but, but this is November, so the flowers are going on right now. The big thing is conflicting with...
Christmas banners?
No, um, they'll operate after, when these come down, then they'll put the Christmas banners up, but it's the hockey banners, uh, for the tournament.
Oh.
That, that's, I think...
How many sport participated in putting up?
We need to find that out.
And where?
Cause she has, she has financial commitments, sponsors in exchange for banners, right?
Okay.
Is there any...
So is there enough funds?
Yeah, we need to ensure we have enough.
On Thornhill?
I'm sure that the Legion would work with us on one thing.
Yeah.
We also have the highway, too, right there, that we've never, well, we do some banners on, I don't do none.
Yeah, cause we have all the...
Oh, yeah, for sure.
For all the corn and apple banners go up on the highway.
We just need to get maybe, uh, Mr. Weave and Claire in the same room.
I think so.
See what's the demand and what's our shortfall, and before we move on this, say, that's what we need to...
Before we order banners, I think we need...
Yeah, I believe they initially asked for Steven Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, but does Claire need Steven Street?
And there's a different time, like, I wish there...
For this year, we can move them to Antonio and then in the following years, we can have...
You know, it'd be nice if we had some kind of agreement or policy on the thing, it's, there's other locations that we put up banners. I know we have, like, for your, to talk about or something, we had, we put banners up, right? Then that year... There are different events that happen, so just so that we, I guess they want exclusivity forever and a day? Is, is that what we're dealing with here?
For Remembrance Day.
Just for that period of time?
He's only up for two weeks, none of them are coming down.
Well, end of October to Remembrance Day.
Okay.
And then he, his thought was then the, the Christmas banners would go up right after Remembrance Day, so it's one they take, take down and put up, so it saved the city double going up twice.
Yeah. Speaking of flags, we need to ensure that they actually have a flag for the Pride event and that they're not expecting us to bring ones that kind of embarrass you, because you showed up and nobody had a flag.
Yeah.
We'll have to ensure that. Well, already that, we'll have to go steal someone off of them.
Off of, a, a local resident's front portrait.
All right, uh, so we'll wait for, on the six thirteen, we'll wait for, uh, the FASL to come back with us, and it's around war in this context, to come back with us, to us with, um, numbers and a strategy for banners. And that takes us to the end of our regular meeting, uh, in camera, we have two items for, for in camera discussion.
I think we had a third, well, whenever we get to the other...
Sure. So because of the presence of cameras in this room, we are going to make the policy to move our in-camera session out of this room, so we will go to the committee room for in camera.
And then come back to you.
Yeah, did we want to take a, a brief break?
Yes.
Yes, running to on the way down there.
Okay, so we'll take a fifteen-minute recess, uh, for the, and then for ten minutes, and then reconvene the other time.